Okay, thank you. It's been moved in second that or resolution twenty-one dash thirty-two. Be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. I will check with our parliamentarian just real quick. Make sure I'm on the same page. Before the clerks read, did we solicit questions from counsel at this?
After the the.
After that, okay. I'm just trying to make sure I'm keeping it correct. Thank you. Okay. And that or or resolution has been moved in seconds. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, resolution twenty-one thirty-two updating resolution seventeen twenty and twenty-one thirteen. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, North Island Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation, prepared for the annexation of the North Island Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen thirteen. Fiscal Plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen twenty twenty-one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non-capital services.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any council questions on resolution twenty-one thirty-two? Thank you. Seeing none, I do believe we have. We do believe we have more resolutions for second reading tonight. Councilman clarity.
Move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-three be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis.
Second.
Thank you. It's been probably moving second resolution twenty-one dash thirty-three. Please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Scambolory.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Clarity.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Sandberg.
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-three be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Or please three.
Resolution twenty-one thirty-three updating resolution seventeen twenty-one and twenty-one fourteen. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington Monroe County, Indiana, Central Island Bloomington Annexation Area. Synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation for prepared for the annexation of the Central Island Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen fourteen. Fiscal Plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen twenty twenty-one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non-capital services in this area.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on the resolution? Twenty-one dash three from council members. Chair and Councilmember Smith or it's scratch. I'm sorry.
Head scratch.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, I do believe we have another resolution for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flair.
Mr. President, I move the resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second or resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four. Be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Rosenbarger. Oh, I'm sorry. I did hear. I was having trouble with my sheet. Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Okay, Scambolory.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Clarity.
Yeah.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
And Rallo. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved in second resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty-one thirty-four updating resolution seventeen twenty-two and twenty-one fifteen. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, South Island Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annex for the annexation of the South Island Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen fifteen. Fiscal Plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen twenty twenty-one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non-capital services in this area.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council on resolution twenty-one thirty-four? Okay, seeing none. The public now has an opportunity to make public comments on on all seven of the resolutions. You can come comment on any one of the resolutions. Members or any one or all members of the public may speak once for up to three minutes and may speak to as many of the resolutions as they wish during this time. However, comment should pertain to one or more of the resolutions. I will also remind the public that in order to speak publicly, you can use the raised hand function via Zoom. I believe you can access that through either the participants button, the reactions button, or the more button. If you on a mobile device, I do believe you could reach through star nine. Or you can send a note to our meeting host via chat function on Zoom indicating your desire to publicly speak. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Yes, I do see the email address J. Skelet at IU.edu. You should now be able to unmute.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kellett. I live at eleven thirty-five North Logan Road. I believe it's in the one A section that's going to be annexed, and I would just like to say that I am in full support of being annexed. I understand that my taxes will go up a bit, but I'm very excited about the services that I might be able to get. We have a road that has lots of children on it, and it's very dark, and we don't have any streetlights, and it would be wonderful to get streetlights. I'd love to have a bus route that came near my home so I could take the bus. We are a one car household, and a bus route would be very beneficial to us as well as many other people living nearby. These are just things that I'm excited about, but on a more philosophical level. I drive on Bloomington roads every day. I use Bloomington traffic lights. I use Bloomington street signs every day. I would not live here if it were not for the city of Bloomington. So I believe that it is my duty as a citizen to be a part of this community, and I'm very excited about being annexed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up is Jamie Ford.
Well, if I believe, did you have a question, Councilmember Flair?
Just a procedural reminder and very much appreciate Ms. Kellitt's comments. But but perhaps the while all interrelated, the best time to comment directly on on the desirability of and and members perspectives on whether or not their area or any area should or should not be annexed is probably in the ordinances. That said, if there are specific comments to the fiscal plan, what's contained in the fiscal plan as it relates to the council's deliberations would be appropriate. So just wanted to make sure members of the public are clear about the multiple opportunities to speak and sort of the the most desirable time, I guess, to speak directly to whether or not they support an area being annexed.
Thank you. That's all right. No, that's very helpful on parliamentarian council member clarity. Thank you very much. Who do we have next? If anyone, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Jamie Ford.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
I'm just gonna say good evening. I just wanted to ask questions. You know, as I stated back in the August public hearing, the the Indiana Code states that this has to be done based on the most current assessed value of the property. Even this quote unquote updated fiscal plan is still not showing or reflecting that updated or the most current assessed value for my property. So how can this whole annexation process continue? When, you know, I I mean, even that alone, aside from all of the all of the other amendments and changes that have been considered so far, but how can this whole amendment process continue when it's not even going to according to the Indiana State Code? You know, furthermore, you know, the the these waivers keep coming up. Fortunately, our property doesn't have a waiver on it, but even then, you know, I I'm not native to Indiana, which if I had a waiver on my house, you're you're trying to force me to live based on a decision that somebody who whoever owned the house when it was first built made. You know, I I mean, the way people move, the way you know, migratory patterns of of people today, you you can't hold us to those kind of standards of people that that held the property before us. And even then, on the Monroe Water Treatment Center, it even says that, you know, Bloomington, you know, treats the water for City Bloomington, IU, Monroe County, and beyond. Well, okay, so are you going to try to annex the whole county then? You know, it because just because you provide water to everybody at that same rate, does that mean that Indianapolis, being the capital of the state, can there can then therefore incorporate us because, you know, our state taxes help pay for the roads that go through here that Bloomington is trying to make money off of? So, you know, but no, we're trying to make money off of that. I I just this whole thing is it's not very transparent. All due respect to the city attorney, he talks about how much time and effort has been put into this, and that if they had to adjust everything, that it would take even more time and stuff. Well, maybe it should have been done right the first time and use the most current assessed values and everything taken into consideration, you know, with all these changes and amendments, and this this just is it's not a good good idea, and I don't trust this fiscal plan. I don't hear anything actually that makes me want want this anymore than I did before. So I I just ask you guys to keep that in mind and just ask those questions. Why is this not based on on that value and how this can all proceed that way? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who have next, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Paul Post.
Good evening, councilmembers. Paul Post, President FOP Lodge eighty-eight. I've been doing it real quick math here. Thanks for the questions from councilmembers about the salary rates that were used in this fiscal plan. Looking at the cost of hiring the new officers that have been proposed. It's a good question about whether we start from one oh five or one twenty-one. The assessment puts it one twenty-one, which we're nowhere near. If you look ahead, one oh five plus twenty-three would put us at one hundred and twenty-eight officers. So it would currently be thirty-seven officers short. One oh five plus the maximum thirty-five officers would be one hundred and forty officers or forty-nine officers short today. I want to make sure that we're looking at the the numbers of officer hiring in terms of where we are today. That cost includes the fourteen officers we're currently short. If we started from the one hundred and twenty-one, as the organizational assessment said, it would be one hundred and twenty-one plus twenty-three at the minimum or one hundred and forty-four officers, making us fifty-three officers currently short. Or one hundred and twenty-one plus the max of thirty-five for one hundred and fifty-six officers or sixty-five officers short. That's a lot of hiring that has to happen in a short period of time. I appreciate the comments tonight and continuing to look at police hiring in terms of annexation. We're very concerned about this already being understaffed and trying to look ahead and see what happens. So thank you for your time and attention to this.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Post. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Jim Shelton.
Good evening, Castle. Jim Shelton, speaking on the financial assessment. I want to remind you at your May nineteenth meeting that I questioned the impact on the county TIPS in the report. And the city indicated they would send representatives to our meeting, which they did indeed. At that, in your initial report that they gave you, they said the impact would be three hundred and four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. They sent representatives to our meeting on the sixteenth of June and changed that down to seventy-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Digging through the six hundred and seventy-six page report that was posted on Friday, I was able to find that now the amount that they are projecting is fifty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And while I love the area as a member of the county's redevelopment commission, I love the trend that is happening here, but it makes me wonder of what's going on. The the explanation from the representatives at the June sixteenth meeting was the Fire Protection District had to be factored in. I can't figure out what the difference is between the June sixteenth numbers and the September tenth numbers is. And there's really no way to tell from the information they provide on page one hundred and ten of the six hundred and seventy-six pages as to how those numbers were derived. So I really think you might want to ask them. I I know that's not your main concern in this is what's the impact on the county's tips. But you you might ought to be concerned somewhat because there's some rows being out there that this is going to help finance that the mayor has agreed need to be done. And I I don't understand how this change has happened. So I invite you to check into that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shelton. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Margaret Clements.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for all of your dedicated time in these long hours and deliberations and over the future of our community. And here we are at really the first point of contention, and that's the fiscal plan. Jamie Ford raised some very good questions about using the latest fiscal data, and I think that she's right that that is cause for stopping this process, number one. Number two, Councilmember Rolos very strong and important questions about funding the police are critical as well. And community member and FOP leader Paul Post has raised some questions about the credibility of the fiscal plan and the credibility of the administration in terms of how they plan to provide for protection. To hear answers by, I think it was by Attorney Ruker, that we're going to deal with it like we've dealt with things from the beginning of time is like an outlandish response to a concerned community about a lack of police that maintain our safety and secure our safety, the number one job of the administration, of the police, of the council, and of the community. I mean, to hear an answer like that defies probability and places in question, frankly, the credibility of everything you're attempting to do. And as a member of the community, with regard to your fiscal plan, I would just like to say I don't believe you. I just don't believe you. I don't think you have done your numbers. I don't think you've done your homework. I don't think it's going to work. I just don't think I just don't believe you. So that's I thank you for listening to me. Thank you for all of the good comments that have been made. I really appreciate the involvement to the community. You've had over a hundred people online who care enough about democracy to weigh in on this important issue. So I hope you take us as seriously as we're taking you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Rita Barrow.
I want to make sure you all can hear me.
We hear you fine, Miss Barrow. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I am asking you to please reconsider just how much property and homeowners you are affecting. Don't consider the comments about animals, guns, or fires. Consider the individuals who have lived in their homes for thirty to forty or more years that are basically living on minimal income. Some are widows or widowers, some who have lost second income because of this, and we are working wondering what they are going to face. Yes, they know that they can request the sixty-five or older. But think about this, their home's assessed value increased exponentially over so the hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-four won't meet that requirement anymore. Families who have just purchased homes, who are barely have enough to make payments and live from paycheck to paycheck. We are talking about these individuals one-on-one. Have you attempted to go out and reach out and talk to them about this? There are individuals who some have never received notice because of incorrect addresses. There are multiple, multiple reasons to really stop and take consideration of the residents in the future that you guys may or may not be representing. I I'm I am saddened by some of the stories that I hear, and I think that you guys need to hear them. Most people that are in this situation are too old to Zoom or they don't know about calling in. They are worried about protection by police. They're worried about increasing on taxes and living paycheck to paycheck. I really believe that you guys need to take the consideration of the residents that you have, not just what is being forced on you with this annexation. I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for your time.
And thank you for your comments, and I will remind the public that we are having public comment on the resolutions or the fiscal plans. And I will also remind folks that if you wish to publicly speak, you can indicate so by using the raised hand function on Zoom, either through the participants button, through the reactions button, or the more button. If you're on a mobile device, star nine should give you access. If all that fails, you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Mr. Lucas, who do we have next?
Yes, next is Julie Thomas.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
I hear you fine, Miss Thomas. You have about three minutes.
Thank you so much. Just as the note, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners is opposed to the annexation plan proposed by the city of Bloomington. I will speak specifically to the fiscal plan. This is about the previous version of the fiscal plan because we hired Baker Tilly, a consultant group, to do an audit of the fiscal plan that we had on hand. And their results should be something that we hope the city council will talk about. Monroe County Community School Corporation will lose four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars annually. Monroe County Public Library, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars annually. Monroe County Fire Protection District, five hundred thousand dollar annual loss. Other taxing units will also face that loss, and Monroe County is slated to lose two point seven million dollars in tax revenue every single year. These reductions are higher than the estimates in the initial fiscal plan from the city. All county residents, whether they live in the city or in an area targeted for annexation or not, will be impacted by these reduced revenues. Monroe County government provides services for all residents, whether they live in the city, a town, or in the unincorporated area, from weights and measures to the Monroe County Health Department. And of course, this includes the largest portion of our county budget, which is dedicated to the criminal justice system, which serves everyone in this community. So we appreciate your time, but we wanted to highlight those, and I hope that city council members will discuss these variations as exposed in our audit that we hired consultant Speaker Tilly to produce for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next, Charlotte Zitlow.
Thank you. Congratulations on the fine rating for the fire department, but I have a question that I don't think has been addressed. And that is what will the role, what will the what would the impact be on the Monroe County Fire District, which is which is just being developed and is a major benefit to the county in general? How would that be impacted? You know, generally speaking, I think it's a mistake to do this. I don't think it's been done well. And I I wish you would just simply put this whole thing to bed, but I don't think that's going to happen. But I do think you should answer all these very important questions that have been raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zitlow. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Please tell your district. You don't want to answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is public comment. And maybe one of our counselors in their final comments would raise that question, but no, we're. Yeah, thank you very much. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Penny Giffens.
Hi, I'm here once again as a resident of Bloomington, and I want to say upfront that I'm not opposed to annexation if it's voluntary, but I have multiple concerns about.
I'm sorry. Can you please identify yourself fully, and you'll have your full three minutes?
Okay, hi, I'm Penny Giffens, and I'm here as a resident of the city of Bloomington. I want to say that I'm not opposed to annexation if it's voluntary, but I have a lot of concerns about what's going on right now. Like several members of the city council, I'm very concerned about the level of staffing in the Bloomington Police Department. As a resident, I'm very worried about the lack of protection that's currently available. If you cannot hire current staffing needs, how can you satisfy the needed staffing that would come about as if there's annexation? And how can you assure me as a Bloomington City resident that my taxes will not increase to pay for this? Now, the fiscal plan that we've been talking about can't answer these types of questions, but in your hearts, I believe the members of Bloomington City Council can. The level of staffing of the BPD needed needed with proposed annexation is just not achievable. This needs to be clearly thought through, along with all the other possible benefits that annexed residents can expect in change in exchange for increased taxes. Let's look at the Broadview Neighborhood, which I understand was part of the area annexed in two thousand and four. After seventeen years, this area does not have sidewalks or streetlights, nor have I been able to identify storm drains there. The Matlock Heights area, which was annexed over twenty years ago, does not have sidewalks, storm drains, streetlights, or bus service. And the road which the city promised to straighten remains at almost ninety degree and almost ninety degree term turn. These were promises made but not kept. If you wish to annex areas into the city of Bloomington, I think you should first make a good faith effort to provide the services to areas already annexed by the city. After all, you've already been collecting additional taxes from these areas for many years. So I want to ask you a couple of questions. How do you justify increased density while adding to the sprawl? How will you guarantee that my taxes as a resident will not increase? What happens if a new mayor or even a new city council are sworn in on January first, two thousand and twenty-four, but will not keep the promises made here? It's clear you care about affordable housing. These taxes will increase cost of housing for not only the residents but for renters in these areas by one hundred to two hundred dollars a month or more. What's the cost of all this city residents? We paid over three quarters of a million dollars in. We paid over three quarters of a million dollars in twenty seventeen to the REEDY Group and everything else that's going on. We've had one fiscal analysis already, well, multiple fiscal analysis now from REEDY Group. What else are we paying? And finally, what is the right size for Bloomington and who gets to make that decision? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you will both know.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Lana Kreider.
Yeah, it's actually Stephen Kreider. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I hear you fine, Mr. Kreider. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I was just wanting to bring up some of the things the previous lady said, because earlier there was a lady come on, and she was talking about wanting sidewalks, she was wanting streetlights, and gonna be glad to get all this stuff. Well, if you go look at Broadview and you go out to where the lady said Matlock, they don't have any of that stuff. Okay, one of them was annexed in nineteen ninety-six, the other one finished the annexation in two thousand four. I guess I would like for you to explain why this stuff hadn't been done, and you're still promising us that you're going to do all this. Then you get to the police department, and I think you're living in fairyland on that. You've lost police officers. You're not gaining any. How are you going to add enough to protect the county residents right now? If you bring them into the city, I mean, it's just, it's just not feasible what you're wanting to do. I think you need to step back, take a look at what you're doing, maybe bring it in a little bit at a time. But what you're trying to do is just almost impossible for police protection. You haven't made any of the promises you made to these other people yet, so why should we expect you to make them good to us? I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I do have a comment from, excuse me, just one second. Lisa Ridge, who says, I would like to know if the board has looked into the numbers that have been presented since the pandemic. The workforce has changed dramatically in the last year and a half due, due to the pandemic. It's hard to fill positions in today's world, especially in the law enforcement world. You need to relook at this since it was originally developed. I would guarantee you that the numbers have changed. And aside from, as I was reading, I see another hand has gone up. Lee Jones is up next.
Thank you. I would just like to remind you once again that.
Ms. Jones, I'm sorry. You'll have your full three minutes, but can you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Lee County Commissioner.
Thank you.
And I would just like to remind you once again that the county is facing a bit of a crisis with its jail. This is something that affects everyone in the county, which means everyone who lives in the city also. The jail is, has been declared to be unconstitutional, and something is going to have to be done about this. We are trying very hard to rectify this in a manner that won't force the community to pay huge amounts of money for a fancy new huge jail. We would very, very much like to be able to bring about reforms in our system that will allow us to not have so many people in jail and to do this safely, of course. Um, this is going to require a lot of money, and it's also going, and money that the county must come up with. It's also going to require more staff time from the county. And one of the budgets that this action will affect the most are the budgets that pay for staff. So in taking this action, you are going to be hampering the county's ability to act on this rather major problem that if we do not successfully act on it, the whole county will pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jones. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional requests for comment at the moment.
Okay, we'll give it just a second. If there's anyone else who want to check in.
I have had some questions come in from folks wondering if this is their only opportunity to comment on the annexation proposals. So if it's all right with the president, I'll just remind folks that this public comment period is on the seven resolutions approving of updated fiscal plans. The ordinances that appear on the agenda will be taken up and turned by the council, and there should be an opportunity for comment on each of those ordinances.
Thank you. That is correct.
And I don't see any additional requests for comment on the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Now that the public has had an opportunity to comment, council members may ask further questions and hear further answers as necessary before concluding comments on the resolutions. Do we have any concluding comments from council, council members, Gambler, and then council member Volan?
Yeah, I have a question. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate Commissioner Thomas's comments and want to acknowledge the importance of them. And I was wondering if we could ask some city staff, I don't know if that would be the mayor, if that would be Mr. Rooker, to comment on the differences in the fiscal plans and between the fiscal plans and the Baker Tilly report. I'm pretty confident all of us on council have read both. But I was wondering if we could have a comment on the source of those differences, perhaps?
Thank you, Councilmember Scambaluri. I would probably be inclined to defer to our financial consultant, Tim Stricker from REEDY Financial Group is here. He'd probably be better positioned to answer those sorts of technical questions, although it might be helpful if, was there a particular difference between the Baker Tilly report and the fiscal plan that you had a question about?
We've, we've talked at a couple of past sessions about the differing assumptions used in creating some of the projections. I think it merits mentioning those for the benefit of the public again and talking through them. So if there are different assumptions in play between the Baker Tilly or other things, what could account for some of the differences?
Sure, and I don't know if Tim has the ability to unmute Stephen, but.
Yes, he should.
Yes. Yes, Tim Schicker here, REEDY Financial Group. I'd like to address some of those differences, at least the ones I'm aware of, that we could, that we could gather from the study. Uh, I believe they just used slightly different industry standard assumptions than we did, although they did acknowledge that we used typical assumptions. I think the biggest one of which is that they assumed that there would be no AB growth between, well, at that time, it would have been twenty nineteen, pay twenty twenty, and the assessment year twenty twenty-four.
And AV is assessed value?
Assessed, yes, sorry, assessed value. But yes, that was, that actually is the biggest assumption difference that kind of drove all of the other differences in the numbers.
And what diff, what kind of differences would that produce?
So the biggest thing that's going to do is it's going to, it doesn't account for the change in the, I guess, the property tax base is what you could say. It's sort of, I guess the easiest way of saying it is it would sort of overinflate the impact due to annexation and underinflate the impact due to natural assessed value growth.
Okay, I may follow up. My time is expiring, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Rollo.
I will just stay on that point, Mr. Stricker. So one comment this evening, and it was also made by several others, is the AV, the assessed value differences are the, is the Baker Tilly more current in AV assessment?
So I can answer that, and then Tim, I think, can confirm it. With fiscal plan five point O, the version that's been brought forward to the council tonight, all of the assessed value figures have been updated from twenty nineteen, pay twenty twenty, to twenty twenty, pay twenty twenty-one. And I think, Tim, can you confirm that for Councilmember Rollo?
That is correct. All estimates and all taxable databases now reflect twenty twenty, pay twenty twenty-one data.
That's a long way of saying we're using the most current available data.
I see. Okay, I still have two minutes remaining, so could I also follow up on Mr. Shelton's query? May I go ahead? Can I finish?
If you don't mind, you'll get the full two minutes, but I missed, got, re-jumped in. I thought you wanted to.
I was just going to add that what our report, the REEDY report assumed was three percent AB growth, while the other report assumed nothing, and we got the AB results, the growth for this year and our projections for next year, and it should be about five percent.
Five percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Lucas, will you ensure that Councilmember Rollo has his full two minutes?
Well, thank you, President Sims. So my, my other question had to do with Mr. Shelton's question about the discrepancies within the county TIF that were quite substantial. Could, could you address those?
Yes, and I think really from a dollar impact, they're not that substantial, and really, again, that's being driven by the update to the newest.
Well, just so we're talking about the same, the same numbers. He says, May nineteenth, it's three hundred and four thousand, June sixteenth is seventy-five thousand, and September tenth is fifty-four. So those are the differences. It seems quite substantial, and if that's, are we referring to the same thing?
Yes, so the, I will say the first estimates, the, I believe it was annexation version three point O, did not correctly calculate AB inside the TIF area. Four point O did fix that. We corrected that. And then five point O, because of the new, the way the AB fluctuated and the way rates fluctuated, ultimately, that's how we end up with the lower impact that he, that he discussed in the combined fiscal plan.
I see. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. I don't think I have time for another. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this question is for the mayor, but I will entertain an answer from anyone who in the administration would like to answer it. I think that the, the most troubling concern I have is about what was just brought up about the twenty-three to thirty-five police officers that will need to be hired to serve the new areas, even accounting for the idea that it might take more than, that we don't have to have the exact number on day one. We've talked long and hard about how difficult it is to hire net, to hire net increase in police officers. And so I'd like something more substantial, a more substantial answer about how we hope to hire the police officers necessary to be ready to go by two thousand twenty-four in this climate that Ms. Ridge referred to. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rooker?
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. You know, I, I will answer to the best of my ability and do my best to satisfy you vehicles for discussing the issue of salaries, police salaries or other salaries. There's a budget process. Obviously, the council has a role in ratifying collective bargaining, bargaining agreements. A week ago, we were all here. I was here. There was a really, I thought thoughtful and substantive conversation on a resolution related to police salaries. These are all, you know, appropriate vehicles for this public discussion and for having a discussion about police salaries. I think a fiscal plan is just a different sort of thing. It's designed to be a reflection based on our best estimates at the time that it's produced of what will be necessary post-annexation to provide services, and it's an estimate, a credible estimate of what will be necessary post-annexation. So to the extent there's a concern about hiring and that's related to salaries, I think there are lots of times and ways to have that conversation, but I don't know that this is the moment for that part of that conversation. This is a moment to examine the fiscal plan and whether the fiscal plan reflects credible estimates and is an appropriate estimate of what will be required post-annexation.
I appreciate the answer, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'd be, look, I'd be, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Let me just make a kind of philosophical point, because there is a lot of planning to be done, but realize that right now, there are one hundred and forty-five thousand residents of Monroe County who are getting law enforcement services from a range of departments, and those are being provided based with a tax base that we all understand in the future, that those same one hundred and forty-five thousand people are going to get law enforcement services from a slightly different mix in different places. The crime rates are not going to be different based on annexation.
That's my time, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
Sorry?
That's my, my time is out.
Okay, well, I just want to make that general point that our community is.
I'll come back to it. Yeah, no, I, I'll follow up. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any other council comments? Okay, I'll, Councilmember Smith, I was going to continue that with Ms. Mayor Ham.
Oh, 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 please do, please do, President Sims, please do. Go ahead.
Thank you. Are you still there?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have three minutes, so please continue to.
Sure.
Address that issue.
I'm just, there's obviously a lot of planning and work to be done over the next three years, depending upon where, what areas are going to come in and exactly when. But I just want to make the general point that the, the, the public support for law enforcement in our whole county, including all the law enforcement divisions, is not going to be reduced. It's actually going to be increased. And the, and the demands of the public for, for law enforcement services are not going to dramatically change based upon annexation. So yes, we will work to, to identify how to expand that and how to allocate what used to be to the sheriff, to the police department, et cetera. But just at a very high level, with the confidence that what we provide now with adjustments, and we're, we're looking at investments, there's not going to be a dramatic change in the need for law enforcement services in those, in that same period that we would project.
Okay, thank you very much. In the time I have, I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Rooker, I believe. And just for the public, the latest fiscal plan for the city is available to the public on city website. Can you explain exactly how they can navigate and find that information?
Yes, absolutely. It's available, and perhaps Mr. Lucas can place this in the chat for people to see. It's available at bloomington.in.gov/annex, A-N-N-E-X. You'll find a link to the, the latest combined version of the fiscal plan on that page.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I, I don't know. I think this is maybe a question for Mr. Stricker or whoever else has some of the database on, on the parcels across the annexation areas. So I'm thinking of the elderly on fixed incomes who may be eligible for the, the income tax, or sorry, the, the tax exemption. Mr. Stricker, can you tell me how many parcels are going to be in the annexation areas as it's set forth right now in the amount of those that are below two hundred thousand dollars to cut off for that exemption?
Tim Schicker here, REEDY Financial Group. Mr. Smith, that is actually information that I will have to run, and I can get that actually to you probably by mid-morning tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that, I, I just, I think I asked that question a couple of weeks ago, and if you have that data, sure, send it to me. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, I wanted to come to follow up on Dr. Zitlow's question about the impact on the Monroe Fire Protection District. And I was looking on page one thirteen of the PDF. And I was looking on page 113 of the PDF of version five fiscal plan and trying to make sense of the the figures in this table as regards the Monroe Fire Protection District, and I'm having a hard time. So could Mr. Stricker or somebody else kind of run through this and let us know what fiscal impact would be on that district?
Tim Stricker here, Reading Financial Group. Yeah, and I actually have the Monroe Fire Protection District impact, the Excel version pulled up here. The, the biggest impacts you're going to see to the Monroe Fire Protection District are the circuit breaker impacts. And then the way that the vehicle excise fit and CBET taxes are calculated, because it's really based on the pool of money available to everyone within the county. So every unit is going to be slightly impacted by that. Then there will also be a reduction in their income tax. Just due to the fact that Bloomington will have a higher percentage of the share once all of the areas are annexed.
So what dollar amounts are we looking at?
So the circuit breaker increase is roughly 300. So I only pulled the sheet up. Yeah, so if you see the total, the total impact there, the circuit breaker alone is 314,662. And then the, the other impacts are about 60,279.
Is that per year?
Yes, that would be per year. And, and again, these are just estimates. Best before estimates.
So about $375,000 per year?
Correct.
And they are not decreasing their service area, if I understand correctly?
That is true.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith, Pete Mon Smith. Do we have any other comments, questions from counselors? Councilmember Rallo. Hang on just for a second. Do we have anyone else before we start this round? Saying that, go ahead, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, Mr. Stricker, could you tell us, again, refresh my memory, County Commissioner Thomas quoted the cumulative impact on county of $2.7 million. Could you tell us what, what your evaluation of that is?
Yes, and based on the information that we could glean, sorry, Tim Stricker, Reading Financial Group. Based on the information that we can glean from the, the external audit by Baker Tully, what we believe was happening is that they weren't phasing in the impact of income tax over time. And we think that was what was creating the biggest dollar difference impact there for the county.
Okay, so you think that's the case?
I don't actually know because we can't, we can't back into the exact number.
So you, you, you're unsure how they derive that number? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, what, what is, what is your cumulative loss estimate for the county?
So our cumulative impact that we calculated was approximately 1.89 million per year.
Okay, so about 800,000, which I think they noted. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do you have any other questions from council? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, so to follow up on the Monroe Fire Protection District. What what avenues do they have to make up for this difference in funding? Since they're not going to have a reduction in service area?
Steve Unger, I could maybe tackle that one. If, if, and one of the things that REED did in their financial projections is they showed what the net impact is over those three years, assuming the growth in really a conservative estimate of growth in the lit and assessed value. And what, so for, if you look at the Monroe Fire Protection District, for example, on, on page 109, at least on the numbered pages, it shows that even with that $374,000 impact, they will have a net gain by the time they get to year one of 1.1 million dollars in revenue. So while it really, when we're, when we're talking about the $375,000 impact, it's, it's a decrease in the net gain that they will have. So they will, they'll, they'll have actually a reduction in some, there'll be, you know, some, some of the, the areas or some of the taxing units have a reduction in service. But overall, every single taxing unit, even with a reduction in service responsibility, by the time we get to the effective date of the annexation, will have a net increase even after the, the loss of revenue because of the annexation.
Yes, but then you have to figure that the cost of everything goes up in the ensuing years as well. So do we know, for example, whether they are at their maximum tax levy?
Tim might be able to, to address that if the, the county is at their, their tax levy. I know the county had a significant balance revenue.
Not, not the county. I'm talking about the fire district.
I don't know. Tim, are you able to answer if they're, they're, they're levy, their max levy?
Tim Stricker, Reading Financial Group. I don't have access or quick access to that information within this 30 seconds. But, but I can get that information to you pretty quickly. So would you like for me to email that information to you?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith. Do we have any other questions from counselors? Okay. And I don't, I think I will throw out a question out here. The information that Mr. Stricker will have to look up. I guess what I'm wondering, is there anyone in administration that has a fairly good, accurate answer to what Councilmember Pete Mon Smith just asked? Okay, guess we'll have to wait on Mr. Stricker. Okay, do we have any other questions from council? Okay, saying now, we will now move to concluding comments on the resolutions from each council member. Before we entertain the motions and concluding comments should last no longer than three minutes before we proceed on. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I don't intend to say a whole lot during the rest of this hearing, so I will get to my main points right here. As we ponder this ambitious annexation proposal, the thought occurs to me that as we strive to right-size Bloomington, we do so as we downsize our county colleagues who represent the interests of their constituency. It's telling, I believe, that three of our county commissioners have joined this discussion on the fiscal plans tonight, and they are in opposition. And that gives me great pause. Another huge obstacle for me, and this is no news to anyone or the administration, is this non-capital issue of police protection and public safety. And that gives me even more pause. So given all that we're, and all that we've examined, I find myself completely losing my appetite for involuntary annexation. It would certainly be my hope that we could do so more incrementally and more because of, of people. And we have heard from people who say they want to be annexed. But that would have to be done in a large enough scale that would make this much more palatable for me. And so that's all I will say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, thank you. I'll pick up on that. I think that county commissioners make a very compelling point. We all rely on county services. And I think that watching county, county government over the years, they have done a tremendous job to build back up their financial systems from a time of neglect essentially in the 1990s, where the levy wasn't taken and there was a lot of overbuilding and so forth. And, and so that's, it has to be considered that we all rely on the justice system, we all rely on the library, we all rely on MCCSC. And so we have to consider that impact on the county as well, because we all live in this community. But what, what I really find, probably the most profound discrepancy here is that this fiscal plan has assumptions built in that I find simply implausible. And, and that is the addition of 23 to 35 police officers, when we are already in at least a 14 officer deficit. That's a simply staggering number. Councilmembers may remember that, you know, we had a plan many years back of adding 10 officers over a period of five years, which meant two per year. And, and that was quite a job to do, and that was under the best of times. Our current status is, is, is not even keeping up, keeping up pace. We're losing more officers than we're retaining, it seems. Building in 3% per, per year and salary increase is simply not going to do it. We're not going to get to that number. And so the conclusion is, I don't see how it's, it's an inescapable conclusion that what we're proposing by these annexations is spreading the police force even thinner than what exists currently, which to me is completely untenable because it puts at risk the citizens, the residents of Bloomington, the, the current margins of Bloomington, the current geographic area. So I think that this is we, our services are not up to, to speed to consider this at this time. And so I think that we should reconsider this. Comebacks at some point in the future, when our services are better placed, to have the feasibility that is important for things like public safety, absolutely essential for this community to have adequate public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any other concluding comments from councilmembers? Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just in general troubled by annexation and the involuntary nature of it. It just gives me pause that we're one of the four states in the nation that allows for involuntary annexation. So it really makes me think really hard about what we're doing. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Okay, Councilmember Flaherty, then Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Sure. I just wanted to bring it back to the fiscal plans and what we're voting on here is whether or not we think this is a responsible and reasonable estimate of what, what the expected impacts and needs are of annexation. I think they are. I think the consultants who've worked on these plans have done a great job actually answering questions and some misunderstandings and or poor assumptions that came out of the, the other audit from, from our county colleagues. Whether or not annexation is a good idea, why involuntary annexation exists, and, and, and that sort of thing. I think that's, that's really an appropriate conversation for whether the ordinance should move forward. And similar, similarly, yeah, I, I think this is a fairly simple question to me, and I'll be voting yes on the series of resolutions that make up the fiscal plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes. I agree with Councilmember Flaherty that we need to focus at this point on the fiscal plan and whether it's a reasonable plan of how we're going to bring services to parts of the city that we would annex. The question of police is a serious one, but I feel like we will need to substantially increase the compensation for police officers in the coming years. And as long as we do that, and certainly the council has some say over that, we should be able to hire a substantial number of new officers as annexation progresses. It's really a matter of compensation, I think, and we can address that outside of this fiscal plan that's presented this evening. So in view of that, I will also be voting in support of the fiscal plans. I, I was struck by what one member of the public said that she just doesn't believe us or the city or the consultants and just doesn't believe it. I, I think that you know, we have hired experts who have done these kinds of calculations for other cities who are bound by law to high professional standards. Furthermore, Mayor Hamilton has has, you know, put forward his, his reputation and his integrity to see through this annexation. And I guess I would just say I do believe, I do believe it's accurate. I don't see any reason to, to think that it is not. And I do see the, the updates that were made with the 2020 property values since version four came out. So I, I see that that's in place as well. So I just wanted to refute that, that particular statement. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Any more concluding comments from council before we move on? Okay, Councilmember Volan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree that this is the time to discuss the fiscal plan. Yet these comments apply to annexation overall, and this moment is the only one to address it as a whole. We'll be taking up individual sections. You know, Bloomington was founded in 1818 by the county commissioners in order to be the seat of Monroe County. It's 200 years later, and now there's a lot more people in Monroe County and a lot more in Bloomington. Both have grown. The city has grown geographically as well as population wise. That makes Elm Heights a county neighborhood. It makes Hyde Park a county neighborhood. It makes Highland Village also a county neighborhood. More than half the county lives in the city of Bloomington as well. I am glad for the current commissioners' reminders that every Bloomington resident is a county resident, something that people who say they live out in the county seem to forget. There are some non-city residents who make their living in the city, their living in the city, who make their homes in areas that have been intended for annexation for at least three decades. They should think twice before they criticize the city and claim that they are separate from it. All these homes in neighborhoods on fifth of an acre lots wouldn't have been possible without the city. Because the minimum lot, all, lot size without sewer was what, one acre, two acres? The people of the city are the guarantors of the existence of CBU. It was the city that built CBU. It was the city's credit rating and bonding power that backs CBU that allows it to exist. If something catastrophic were to happen, it would be that same credit rating and bonding power of the people represented by the municipal corporation of the city of Bloomington that will be called on to guarantee that reconstruction. In short, the city made those neighborhoods outside city limits possible. If people are enjoying their affordable homes outside city limits, but with city utilities, they have the city to thank for making their affordable homes possible. One is only to see the vote of the current commissioners in June to see their reaction to the urban problems of our time. Commissioner Githens asked us how we plan to prevent sprawl. When a developer presented them a choice of 95 half million dollar houses or 190 paired townhouses at half the price, at a price less than the median sales price of homes in Monroe County in April, which was almost $300,000. The commissioners chose the former. Commissioner Thomas tonight. The commissioners chose the former. Commissioner Thomas tonight acknowledged that Bloomington is a part of the county. He called this project, quote, "too dense for the county," unquote. She might as well have said that Bloomington itself is too dense for the county. This was the very kind of more affordable housing residence and their wood employers, but inside or outside of the city need. We can't even agree on what Ms. Clements, Chair of the County Plan Commission, just tonight called our community, what that is or who belongs in it. But the commissioners do not just represent people living outside the city, and the annexations are the inappropriate action right now. I support the fiscal plans, especially now that they've been properly updated. I am concerned about the logistical plan for using that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more concluding comments from council? Okay, seeing none. The business at hand now is finally that council will entertain suitable motions one at a time in regard to adoption of each resolution. Okay. And Councilmember Flaherty, am I correct that we are now moving to adopt and moving forward from that point?
That's correct. And I'd be happy to make a motion on, on the first of those resolutions. I move that Resolution 21-28 be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we first have on this Resolution 21-28, any further comment from the administration? Okay. Is, is that proper?
We're, normally we would move to adopt before discussion of a resolution. So we're a little outside of our normal procedural line, but I think that time for the presentation, the administration and council member questions per the motion made by Councilmember Piedmont Smith has, has come and gone. So I think at this point, after the motion to adopt is made and seconded, you can go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll. Barring any objection from a council member.
And for, it's been properly moved to second that Resolution 21-28 be adopted. Will the clerk, in second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenberger.
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollin?
No.
And Rollin?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that was seven two zero to adopt. Now we have a restructure, structure or process here. And I believe we are to go to city representatives if they have, or city petitioners, if they have anything, then back to the council, then public, and then to the councils. That's the same process, Council.
No, Mr. Sims, President Sims, my apologies. Yeah, all that was structured or contained within, within the, the structure of introductions, presentations, questions, and then public comment and additional questions. So at this point, again, barring any objection from a council member after the motion's made, all we need to do is have a motion to adopt, a second, and a, and a roll call for each of the resolutions in order. So we can go ahead and move on to the next.
Thank you very, very much. Okay.
Yes, I moved it, Resolution 21-29 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Resolution 21-29, motion to adopt passes six, three. Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that Resolution 21-30 be adopted.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and adopted. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. According to my count, that motion to adopt passes six, three. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 21-31 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 21-31?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
That motion to adopt Resolution 21-31 passes six, three. Councilmember Flaherty.
As I move that Resolution 21-32 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded for adoption. Will the clerk please call the roll for Resolution 21-32?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that motion passes six to three as well. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sorry, a quick confirmation from the clerk. That was, that was 21-32, correct?
Correct. Yes, it was.
Okay, then in that case, I will move that Resolution 21-33 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 21-33. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adopt Resolution 21-33 passes six to three. Councilmember Flaherty.
Move that Resolution 21-34 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Resolution 21-34 be adopted. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
No.
Thank you. Resolution 21-34, motion to adopt passes six to three. Okay, Councilmember Flaherty, again, we talked a lot about the new structure. And I'm seeking your counsel. Where do we go from here with regard to public comment, council statements or anything?
I, I think with regard to the ordinances themselves, we will probably consider those more like we traditionally do, one at a time with, with presentation and comments on each of those, but I
I'm sorry, I was referring to if we were complete with the resolution.
Oh, yes. What we've, we've, yeah, now finished our, the resolutions. Sorry.
Okay. I just, no, 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 you, you, I probably said the wrong thing. I'm trying to make sure we're straight. Okay, before we go to ordinance, or the ordinances, what I would like to offer my colleagues is that we will well, I've got a request from the clerk for a brief recess. Do we have any objections for five-minute recess? And then when we come back, I'll continue my conversation on the 10:30 rule and where we go from there with regard to the ordinances. With no objections, we'll see you back in five minutes, if that's okay. I believe we have some ordinances ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
We do, and we could take those up directly now, starting with 1709, although I did want to ask the chair if I, I don't know if in your conversations with the, the mayor's administration, they would have overview comments for, for, that apply to all the ordinance as a whole that they wish to share first, or perhaps they already accomplished that when we discussed the resolutions. So I just wanted to check in on that prior to introducing an ordinance for adoption.
It's my understanding that the administration may wish to make general comments about each proposal of the annexation ordinances. Does that answer?
So they don't want a, a presentation period that applies to all, all things collectively? They just want to address each ordinance one at a time? Is that right?
I would offer to them to make a, a presentation to deal with the resolutions.
Okay.
Ms. Guthrie, is that?
Yes, Philippa Guthrie Corporation Council. I think our comments will apply to all of the ordinances equally, aside from Area 7, which is the final one I think you are voting on. We have collectively studied these areas beginning in 2017 very carefully. You have looked at them. We have looked at them. You refined them this year. And we believe that all of these areas are appropriate, aside from Area 7, for annexation. They meet the criteria of the statute. They are part of our community, and we ask that you adopt them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will follow up. You by no means have to make more specific comments on each ordinance. I guess I'm just double checking on your intent to do so as we proceed through the ordinances. And you still have the, and you still have the option.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Having said that, I do believe we have legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 17-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. That ordinance 1709 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rollin?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Piedmont Smith? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes nine oh. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, Ordinance 1709, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington Southwest A Bloomington Annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the Southwest A Bloomington Annexation area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory, and was initially adopted via Resolution 1716 and amended via Resolution 2109. The approval of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration in a common council session on September 15, 2021, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Known on amendments which have been incorporated into, sorry, which have been incorporated into Ordinance 1709. At the May 19, 2021 regular session, the council adopted Amendment 01 to Ordinance 1709, which updated the map and legal description for Southwest A Bloomington Annexation area, and also changed various date references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to 2021 so that it could properly, so that it could be properly considered by the common council. At the August 31, 2021 special session, the council adopted Amendment 2 to Ordinance 1709, which added an impoundment fund and the corresponding advisory board for Southwest A Bloomington Annexation area. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that Ordinance 17-09 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. That ordinance 17-09 be adopted. Mr. Lucas? Do I understand that there is a administrative amendment 03 to this ordinance? Is that correct? And do they need a sponsor?
Yes, there, there, there was an amendment prepared and included in the materials for tonight, and the administration would appreciate a council member moving that amendment. And, and then I assume they would be able to speak to the purpose of it.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I would like to sponsor and move adoption of Amendment 3 to Ordinance 17-09.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded Amendment 3 of Ordinance 17-09. Mr. Rucker, would you please present?
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. This is a really simple amendment. It updates the legal description and the maps associated, and then the overall acreage associated with Ordinance 17-09 to remove one additional parcel that was inadvertently excluded from the First Amendment to this ordinance. It's the parcel that's being removed. In this case, is the old GE plant, which is now owned by Cook. There is a payment and move of annexation agreement between Cook and the city that explicitly excludes this parcel from Area 1A, and this amendment simply makes that correction.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to questions from council. Do you have any questions from council to administration regarding Amendment 03 of Ordinance 17-09? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to the public for any public comments on Amendment 3 of Ordinance 17-09. If there is any public comment, you can please indicate by using the raise hand function in Zoom, either by the participants button or the reactions button, or maybe the more button. If you wish to do so on a mobile device, stars nine should give you If you wish to do so on a mobile device, star nine should give you access. And barring anything else, you could send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, indicating your desire to publicly comment. Okay, Mr. Lucas, do you see anyone?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move back to council for any questions and final comments on Amendment oh three of ordinance seventeen dash oh nine. Okay. Seeing none, will the court please call the roll on Amendment oh three of ordinance seventeen dash oh nine?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Abstain.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I actually couldn't hear that. Can you repeat it?
Yes.
Thank you. Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
And Rallo?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. Amendment oh three of ordinance seventeen dash oh nine passes five, two, and two, if I have those numbers correct. Okay, thank you. Now we will move to ordinance seventeen dash oh nine as amended. And we will go to council for any comments. I'm sorry, questions on ordinance seventeen dash oh nine as amended? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public for any comments on ordinance seventeen dash oh nine. I'm sorry, amendment, or I'm sorry, ordinance seventeen dash oh nine as amended. And I will indicate again, if you wish to publicly speak, please, please indicate so by using the raise hand function at the bottom of Zoom, either through the participants button, reactions button, or the more button. If you have a mobile device, you can access this by star nine, or you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Yes, first is Colby Wicker.
Hello, can you all hear me?
I hear you fine, Mr. Wicker. Please proceed.
Sure. Hello, my name is Colby Wicker. I am the president of County Residents Against Annexation. And, you know, I had a I had a speech prepared tonight that I wanted to give you all and 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 sort of try to try to tell you is some of the reasons why I would ask you to vote no on this. But, you know, I feel like many of those arguments have been made al- already tonight. And I feel like tonight, as you all well know, you have a monumental decision laying before you. You have a decision, one of monumental consequences also. My organization has provided to your office a report which outlines that thousands and thousands of residents have have signed and and that they do not want to be annexed. And tonight, you all face a decision of whether or not you want to respect the sentiment of these individuals. Clearly, if they were given the option, if if this was put on a ballot, if they were asked if they wanted to be members of the city of Bloomington, they would all vote no. Maybe maybe not all of them. I I I take that back, but a a preponderance of them certainly would vote no. And and I know that from speaking to hundreds and hundreds of them. And that will be my my general comments for tonight, and you'll hear hear me throughout the rest of the night as we go through with these ordinances. Just just a story that I've heard from from each each of the individuals of of these of the annexation areas. As as for the individual I want to talk about in Area one A, I won't use any names, but he has been a a great volunteer of mine. I I've went to his house on numerous occasions. We've stood in in his garage doorway, and we've laughed, and we've made jokes. And we've and we've talked about how these annexation proposals, th- this ordinance in particular, will affect him and his family. He he's going to pay upwards of eight hundred dollars more per year on his taxes. He's lived in in this in this community for forty four years. And and he's and it's going to be very hard for him to afford to stay in his home. And and I I feel that you all should know that he's not the only person in this situation. There are many like him, many, many more. And I I want you all to wait tonight with your with your yes or no vote that those worries are going to have very, very huge consequences on on the people who who live in in this incorporated area of Monroe County. And I I would ask you to please vote no on this ordinance.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wicker. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see at the moment, no.
Okay, we'll give it just a just swing the hand proper.
Yes, I see a couple of hands now. First is Margaret Clemmons.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me again, and I think this is about Annexation Area one A. Is that correct? Well, throughout Annexation Area one A, there are neighborhoods that are that meet all of the same requirements that Edgewood Hills achieved when they were carved out. There's no room for growth. They've spoken with council members, Scambolary. They've they have ninety eight percent consensus in not wanting to be annexed. They pretty much are more adjacent to Annexation Area seven than they are to one A. It's over there in that little area by the Kroger supermarket by Kinzer Pike. It's sandwiched in between a quarry and the golf course and the Kroger and the bypass. And there's really no real logic for them to be included, and they're all, for the most part, elderly people on fixed incomes. They've come to my office hours at ten ten South Walnut Street, and they've spoken to me. You know, you're causing a lot of good people, a whole heck of a lot of stress. And at a time in their lives that they wanted to have more peace than the the disruption that this annexation process is bringing to their predicted ability to pay, continue to pay their own way. So I I I really would urge you to be more thoughtful. This annexation process, to me, is opposed overwhelmingly by county residents. I've been knocking on trailers and two million dollar mansions alike and over the annexation areas, one A, one B, one C, two, three, four, five, you know, seven, I've even spoken with, and six. There are just so many. I mean, it's like a punishment. You guys are threatening to annex people who don't want to be annexed. You make these inflated claims about the role of Bloomington in their lives, and really, they just want to be let alone, left alone. I mean, the sign "Let Us Be" means something to us. We'd like you to listen. Just let us be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. What do we have, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Penny Giffens.
Hi, I'm Penny Giffens, both Monroe County Commissioner and a resident of the city of Bloomington. I too have been out and knocked on some doors and talked with residents. Over the last couple of years, I've watched the town of Ellisville grow through voluntary annexation. These new residents of Ellisville wanted to be annexed. I would urge you to follow that kind of saying, kind of path or pattern. But what's occurring with the annexations being voted on by the Bloomington Common Council is involuntary annexation. And with only one or two exceptions, everyone you've heard from and everyone I've talked to has opposed annexation. Why is that? They are not interested in paying higher taxes for the possibility. And based upon history, it is clearly only the possibility of getting bus service, storm drains, curbs, sidewalks, better public safety protection, whatever the list is. But at the same time, as both Colby and Margaret have said, you've received information from county residents against annexation about the number of citizens who are likely to file remonstrances against annexation. If many of these areas successfully remonstrate, what has been the purpose of all this? If this leads to lawsuits or even a court decision on each of the remonstrances, this could string out for many, many years, as it has in other communities in Indiana. What will be the fiscal cost of all this? And what is the cost in time, emotional stress, and energy? As a resident of Bloomington, I ask you to please stop this and vote no on all of the proposed annexation ordinances. Thank you for your time, and I do not envy your task.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Giffens. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Julie Thomas.
Hi, I appreciate again the time. I'm not going to repeat the same information. This is really
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas. Can you identify yourself, please? You have your full three minutes.
County Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you.
I won't repeat same information I provided before, and I'm not sure I can stay on how late I can stay on because I do have to get up very early in the morning. But I thought it was interesting to hear the comments that Councilmember Smith made about Heritage Woods. Not developable, rural, sidewalks unlikely. What what benefits will they receive from annexation? Well, how many of you have met with residents in each of these neighborhoods to learn about each neighborhood? Because each neighborhood is unique, and each neighborhood has a reason, and the neighbors have a reason for not wanting to be annexed. This question about all of these questions should be asked of each and every neighborhood. And I ask the council to not vote on this until you have met with these folks, and then it becomes a voluntary annexation. What do they need? What do they want? Do they want to spend nine thousand dollars to install a sewer, for example? The Board of Commissioners as a body has spoken against this proposed annexation because of the size, the scope, the speed of the process, and the lack of public input. And people choose when they move to live in the county, to move to the county, to live in the county, they choose not to live in the city, for whatever their reasons may be. I hope you can respect that. We also are dealing with the impact of COVID in terms of this meeting, in terms of how remonstrances will be collected, how people will know what's going on, how they can attend a meeting. It's a very different world, and we should appreciate that. And I appreciate Mr. Rucker speaking about the anxiety of having to recalculate numbers. Well, guess what? Area residents are feeling really anxious. They're upset. They're scared. They're trying to calculate numbers. They're trying to figure out how much this is going to cost them and what they're going to receive in response. Please meet with each neighborhood, meet with the residents. This could be voluntary. And I also ask the rhetorical question. If if Cook Corporation can pay in lieu of being annexed, can residents do the same thing? Perhaps that should be an option. Maybe they can buy their way out of this anxiety and this concern that they have for their futures. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Thomas. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Rita Barrow.
Hi, I'm Ms. Rita Barrow. I'm the trustee of Van Buren Township. And what I do is represent the individuals that are in Van Buren. I have spoke with them, and this is not my first time. As you guys well know, we did this back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And we're getting the same answers, except they're older. They're older, and some of the residents have lost their spouse, and so now they're living on one income. And usually, a child is there to try to help them make it. I'm I'm talking about people that we do township assistance with. You guys have never ever had to do that. You are talking about one individual that came in and told me, Rita, I have worked for thirty years, and I no longer have a job. I have five years left on my mortgage, and they are going to foreclose. I said, no, they're not. I am going to help you. You have paid your taxes into Van Buren. This will not occur. He said, I've got a job. I just don't have it right now. You guys need to think about this. You all are going to get old, too. You are going to live on one income. Let's see how you do this. I implore you to please think about these people, not yourselves, not the city, not everybody is in the same situation that some of us are in. Think about it, please.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Barrow. I think she was finished. Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas? I'm sorry.
Next is Sally Letz- Letzinger, who should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you fine.
Okay, my name is John Clark. I'm sorry, Letzinger's husband, not used to public speaking here, so I would like to encourage you to vote down these annexation proposals in their entirety. Some weeks ago, I wrote you all a letter with my reasoning for this. I would like to give a particular shout out to Councilmembers Sandberg, Rallo, and Ron Smith for recognizing this process for what it is and having the integrity to stand up against it. In the letter I wrote some weeks ago, I quoted Thomas Jefferson in the Declaration of Independence, who, after life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, pointed out that the just powers of government, I paraphrase, derive from the consent of the governed. Thereby, if you do not have the consent of the governed, you do not have a just power of government. And I think some of you there recognize this. And I think it is clear from all the previous comments that you do not, in fact, have the consent of the governed in this situation. Therefore, I am just stymied to understand why so many of you appear to be willing to move this process forward when it is clearly undemocratic and unfair. So with that, I would like to push back a little bit against John Hamilton's comments on policing, which I also think is a huge issue, but I don't have the time to go into. Mayor Hamilton seemed to think that, oh gee, if you look at it countywide, we've got these other agencies, and the amount of crime's not going to go up and this and that. But that's a really disingenuous point. The fact is, on January first, twenty twenty four, Bloomington is going to increase by fifty six percent in area. And when anybody in that greatly expanded area calls nine one one, the county sheriff is not going to respond. Bloomington Police Department must respond, and you do not have or the mayor's office does not have the capability providing that service. So I would suggest to all of you to please, please, across the board, reject these annexation proposals, kick them back to the mayor's office for a more appropriate approach. And I would encourage all of you with regard to the police department to tell the mayor to get his own house in order before he messes with our houses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, we'll give it just a second. And seeing or hearing that, and of course, I just want to thank the public for the comments. Okay, seeing no further, we'll now go to council for other questions and or final comments on ordinance seventeen dash oh nine. and/or final comments on ordinance 17-09 as amended. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. I'd like to follow up on a question posed, a statement posed by Margaret Clemmons and Ms. Barrow about residents who in the county who live on fixed incomes, low-income residents who will see, no doubt, their rents go up. I spoke to a landlord this week who owns some properties west of Curry Pike. And he notes that quite a lot of those are rentals. The costs are surely going to be passed on to the renters. Has the administration looked into this, the effect on low-income residents in that area?
Sure, I can comment on this. As you know, even though we didn't have.
I'm sorry. I know it's been a long night. I know.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. You always keep me on the straight and narrow. Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. The city has produced, even though we didn't have to do this, we produced a many, many hundreds pages long parcel-by-parcel tax impact, which shows the precise amount, or I should say a precise estimate for the amount we think property taxes will go up on each parcel post-annexation. You know, obviously, there is no way and there's no person who can tell you whether any or what proportion of increased property taxes may be passed along from a landlord to a renter. I think if you could find somebody who could predict that, they would be, they wouldn't be here at this annexation hearing. They'd be making a lot of money.
There's no way. Let's assume the worst-case scenario, Mr. Rooker. Let's assume it all goes for them.
Yeah, and that seems this is not likely to happen. But if you want to assume that, we can certainly look at the properties. And there's all sorts of information in the fiscal plan on that. Obviously, like a number of taxes in America, property taxes are progressive. So they're much lower for somebody who's living in a more modest home, a lower, a home with a lower assessed value. And they're higher for somebody who's living in a higher assessed value home. So individuals who tend to be able to only afford more modest homes are going to see a much reduced impact compared to.
How many people do you think it will impact who are in fixed incomes or low income?
How many?
An area, an area 1A, yeah.
We don't have the numbers. Nobody has the numbers. We don't know the numbers of people on a fixed income in area 1A. There's no way to, that data doesn't exist, that data set.
How about renters?
The number of renters in area 1A? We don't have that data set either, although we will be able to have that information after, if areas are annexed, because we have a very robust, you know, has a very robust program for protecting renters from abuses by landlords, which is a program that will be available to renters after annexation. So we will have that information post-annexation. But we don't have that information pre-annexation. It's not available.
So what, your impression, the overall effect will be what, minimal or inconsequential for fixed income people?
The answer I would, I would give is the same answer I gave a moment ago, is that the answer will, the effect will vary depending on the assessed value of the home. So if you're in a more modest property, the effect is much smaller than if you're in a more valuable property. And if you look at the parcel-by-parcel impact, that bears that out.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other final comments from council members on ordinance 17-09 as amended? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, President Sims, are you on comments or questions?
We're taking questions, but I, we're in the last section, so final comments is what I'm hoping, but we will entertain questions.
Okay.
You have questions?
No, I don't have questions. Should I go ahead with my comment?
Well, I think Councilmember Rallo had another bite at the apple for questions. Is that correct?
No, except to say that it seems to me census data would be, I won't explore it anymore with Mr. Rooker. Put it that way. I'll reserve my time for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we are now in final comments for council. I believe Councilmember Pete Mount Smith, if you're ready, and then Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah. As I said earlier this evening, the annexation process in the state of Indiana is not an ideal process by far. And so I, I recognize that it would be better if, for example, the people who are in the annexation areas will be able to vote for the next city council election and mayor election. But the way we have things now, I think it's, it's only natural that people don't want to be annexed because people do not want to pay higher property taxes. That's, you know, makes sense. I probably wouldn't want to either. But I think just fundamentally, we need to look at the big picture and see, why do most people live close to Bloomington? Is it because they're close to Steinsville, Elletsville, Harrisburg? You know, I don't, I think what I'm getting at is I think most people live close to Bloomington because of Bloomington. Because of the employers here, because of Indiana University, because of the cultural offerings, the restaurants, the shopping, everything that we offer factors into why people live in Monroe County. And so we can't just disregard that and say you're, you're not part of our community. And on the other hand, they also cannot say we're separate from Bloomington because they're not. They drive on our streets every day. They take advantage of our, you know, our amenities, or even our parks programs, all the different things that make Bloomington great. And so people who live just adjacent to Bloomington city boundaries, as has been recognized for decades with the Two Mile Fringe and the areas intended for annexation, those people do belong as part of Bloomington. And I know it's, it's a financial burden for some people. But in the long term, there are going to be benefits as well. And Mr. Rooker just mentioned the rental inspection program. It's been a very useful program for our habitable, that places are safe. And so that program being extended is huge, in my view, a huge benefit. I could go on and list other benefits, but I guess I just philosophically feel that that people who live so close to Bloomington already feel like they're part of the community. Their address is already Bloomington. They come here every day and they should be part of the city. And I know people looking at their property tax bill couldn't care less about my philosophy, my philosophical reasons. And I understand that. But as a public servant, as somebody who has been elected by people to represent Bloomington, I think growing Bloomington and growing our boundaries and including more people who live just beyond our current boundaries is, is, is good for the community as a whole. And I want to bring those people in and have them elect the leaders of Bloomington because everything we do in Bloomington has a great impact on them. So let me cut off my rambling there and just say that as a matter of principle, I think that the areas in 1A that we're discussing now for ordinance 1709 are appropriate to be annexed into Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith. I believe Councilmember Rallo is next. Yes.
Thank you. Well, I don't, I think that county residents, people beyond the city's boundary are well-served by county services. And I don't think that we need to assume that necessarily ours are always better. As a matter of fact, I think that as rents have gone up in Bloomington, we've pushed lower-income people to the periphery of the city. And now we're going to annex them, which is going to incur more expenses for them. I think the administration may avail themselves to census data regarding my question about people on fixed income or low-income residents. And then we would have some idea of the effect, but I think it will be profound. I think that Ms. Barrow and Ms. Clemmons are correct. I think it's very telling that the county commissioners are in unanimous opposition to this. I think that it is going to have a severe impact on their revenue. And I think we all depend upon that, just as we've heard that people are dependent upon the city. We're dependent upon county services as well. And we have to take that into account. Regardless, I think that this could, this whole process could have been different. It could have been a voluntary process. It could have been, it could have included more engagement and it could have happened at a time post-pandemic. This is far from ideal for people to engage in such a profound change to their, to their lives. The county has developed a land use plan that I think is very forward-thinking and preserves the role character of, of the county. So I think that they're in many ways ahead of us. And we've spoken for years against sprawl and this may be inducing sprawl by what we're doing in terms of annexation. But my most pressing concern is concurrency. The idea that our city services should be up to speed before we even presume to add more geographic space. And clearly, I mean, looking at just alone, the police, everyone should recognize, I mean, I think it's self-evident that we're not up to that task. That should have been probably preeminent in the planning of the administration for the last few years is to make absolutely certain that we were in a position to expand services. We have forced overtime now on the police department. How are they possibly going to patrol areas that we're going to annex? So I think we need to think long and hard about what we're doing here. Because I have to be concerned about city residents, current city residents too, and the amount of public safety that they can be afforded at this time. Because it's, it's not there for them, let alone annexing. So we should put this off. We should wait. We should wait for a better time, have better engagement with our county colleagues, get our, get our services up to speed so we can begin thinking about it. And yes, have a voluntary process where people engage and wish to be. I think that that would be ideal. This is far from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other final comments from council? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. First note, one gentleman invoked the integrity of council members. Just gonna say that I think all of my colleagues have integrity and whether or not you agree with someone is not a proxy for integrity. We ran into this a little bit with past housing discussions and some other things. Members of the public attacking the character of council members, which is out of order. You are welcome to disagree with ideas. It is inappropriate and disrespectful to attack our character based on a disagreement. So I hope in the future, as we consider the rest of these ordinances, people can keep that in mind. But again, all nine of us are doing our best as public servants to represent the greater good of this community to the best of our ability. You may disagree. You may not vote for us next time. That's all okay. But we all act with integrity, doing our best. Moving on. I think, you know, the same gentleman mentioned the idea of the consent of the governed and there's been a lot of discussion about a voluntary, which is involuntary process. I think going forward, we will probably mostly see voluntary annexations. I think the State House may change that legislation. I think a lot of states have. That's perfectly acceptable and probably a better system. I agree with that. The problem is that we have had a different system in place for a long time. And that the city, for a long time now, a decade and a half, has acted in reliance on the rules of that previous system. A system that lets you have an exchange that takes place over time. So we extend city sewer service in exchange for a waiver that we will annex you in the future without remonstration. If that process didn't exist that would allow for that, none of these places would have been built. We would have done voluntary annexation at that time. The reason we're pursuing involuntary annexation now is because it's more efficient and allowed places to be built without annexation happening at the time. So to say that we should now move to voluntary annexation right now is changing the rules in the middle of the game when we have already delivered on the first half of an agreement. The second half is that the areas that received sewer service are expected to be annexed in the future. That is the valid consideration exchanged by both sides of a contract. That's, that's what we're doing here. So I find it entirely disingenuous to suggest that this hasn't been understood as part of a contractual relationship for an extended period of time. I spoke briefly to this framework during the Heritage Woods Amendment, which is that my view, and some of my colleagues may disagree, and that's perfectly acceptable, is that for the areas where we have extended sewer service, it is pretty logical and expected to me. And I think understood by parties at the time of those, that service being extended, that they would be annexed in the future. It is impossible, based on state regulations, including a 2015 law about city boundaries and how they apply to future annexations. It is impossible for us to only annex areas with sewer service that has already been extended, where there are valid waivers against remonstration. That means that we can either annex nothing, even though, again, we've already extended sewer service to an urbanized area in exchange for future annexation. Or we can accept that as an urbanized area grows, as a city grows, that there are some areas that are slightly differentially situated outside our boundary as we, as we grow. And that when you bring people in, different parts of the city look different. You know, the area on the way to Lake Griffey looks quite a lot different than the area outside my condo. There are varying densities, varying types of development, apartment buildings, mixed use, single-family neighborhood, you know, neighborhoods with predominantly single-family homes all over the city. And that's going to be true of these annexation areas too. It's not uniform. But that's okay. That's just the nature of a city. So proximity has a lot to do with it and surrounding context has a lot to do with it, in my view, which again is what led me to vote for Edgewood Hills removal and not for Heritage Woods. The surrounding context matters a whole lot here. So you know, just a final point, I guess, at least for now, is that I think my colleague, Councilmember Scambler, already mentioned that, you know, this isn't a transaction. I mean, we discussed this a few weeks ago. And I think it's important to keep in mind that, looking at the individual level of will I get a service in excess of the amount my tax, tax bill may go up is, is I don't think a good way to look at it because it discounts or ignores the many benefits that people who live outside of city limits already derive from the proximity to the city. So if you're going to engage in some sort of cost-benefit analysis based on your increased tax bill, you have to include the benefits you're already receiving, use of city infrastructure, for instance, or parks. So that's pretty complicated to get into that sort of analysis, but I think we often don't think about the status quo and what is already represented by the current relational, relationships between folks who live outside of city boundaries and the city itself. So I'll probably add some more thoughts and thinking on general things in time as we consider these ordinances. But I think that that covers at least part of the way I'm thinking about this issue. So I'll be voting yes for area 1A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Do we have any other final comments from council members on ordinance 17-09 as amended, area 1A? Councilmember Scambler and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, thank you. Some of my thoughts here apply to all of the ordinances that we're going to be looking at, but I only intend to make these comments wanted, in all likelihood. One of the things I talked about when we last met and during public hearings and in countless conversations with individuals are the differences in arguments that are compelling and those that are not. I think over the course of several weeks, we've heard a lot of compelling arguments about, for example, the characteristics and the nature of an area proposed for annexation. the characteristics and the nature of an area proposed for annexation. We talked a lot about that with Edgewood, about, about that with Edgewood Hills. We've talked a lot about that with Heritage Woods Road. And Edgewood Hills was successfully withdrawn, Heritage Woods was not. But I think you all saw that we were all pausing on that and trying to reflect on that. But the characteristics and nature of an area are compelling. An area's connectivity to Bloomington and the extent to which it exists largely because Bloomington is here is also compelling. I feel the need. Councilmember Flaherty spoke to some of this, but I, I want to put a finer point on a couple of things. Arguments that are not compelling to me or, or statements that are not compelling to me. The notion that it, this is all just about money. I've, I've heard the comment, oh, this is just a land grab. This is just about more tax revenue. Councilmember Piedmont Smith said this much more eloquently than I will, but there's a connectivity, whether we acknowledge it or not, based on the proximity in which we live to each other. And so, no, this is not just about money or a land grab or something like that. It is about thinking as a community and acknowledging the ecosystem that is greater Bloomington. Another statement. If we support the annexation of any area, it must be because we're just not listening. Okay. I can pretty much promise you that everybody on this council is listening. Everybody on this council has had multiple meetings with constituents in all of these areas. Most, if not all of us, I'm assuming, have traveled to every single one of these areas and seen them. So the notion that, that we're just not listening. I would respectfully disagree with that characterization. The other notion that, okay, well, maybe we're listening, but we're just not thinking deeply enough about it. We're just not thinking about it. This has been brought up a couple of times in public comment with regards to policing. I would like to think that the last several council meetings and the resolution around policing salary, which passed even with some pretty significant pushback from administration. I would like to think that that underscores the notion that, yes, we do think critically and we do think deeply about issues and about a good way forward. And then be assured. Again, we give every single one of these areas serious thought. We may disagree on some outcomes. But again, to Councilmember Flaherty's point, we are all trying to do our best to discern and sort through this information. It's my intention to support the ordinance for Area 1A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambolary. Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The two mile fringe has been a term I've heard ever since I got to Bloomington in the eighties. The concept was changed with an official renaming of the area, the areas intended for annexation in the nineties, and it's been called that ever since. I don't know how somebody lives in these areas for 25 years and not be aware of the term AFA. Not be aware that the city has always been considering its annexation. In my long term of service on council, I've been asked to consider, along with my colleagues, many tax abatements for new businesses proposing to bring jobs to the city. The law says they can't be for more than 10 years, but they're not discounts. The city simply delays collecting the tax for that period of time. The property tax burden of the city in that, in any given year is spread among the remaining properties until the abatement works itself out. If anything, those living in areas like 1A have been given a remarkable gift when their property was built, when they were extended sewer service, a tax abatement with no expiration date. There were 12 extra years of abatement provided by the previous administration, stopped annexation since 2004. This administration finally decided to call in the abatement on these areas that all benefit from their proximity to the city. That was followed by a four year extension as a result of the unconstitutional action by the state house, contradicting the existing law created by the state house that Councilmember Flaherty referred to. All those powers to tax abate to annex stem from the state, which is a democracy. And the taxes are not even going to begin if this passes until more than three years from now. That sure is a pretty long tax abatement. Meanwhile, without irony, these were some of the comments that I heard made by opponents of annexation on August 4th. Someone said, I've lived in Bloomington all my life. I'm 55 years old. This is somebody who's opposing annexation, says they live in Bloomington. Somebody referred to Garden Acres, one of the older additions in Bloomington. Yet it's not in Bloomington. This is my favorite one. This is said without irony. The people of Bloomington will tell you no when remonstrance comes. Just think about that for a second. The people of Bloomington will tell you no when remonstrance comes. So it's not like the people who live in these areas don't think of themselves as Bloomingtonians. But they don't seem to want to participate in the city of Bloomington. There's a lot of aspects to annexation that have been discussed in the extensive conversations, not just this year, but four years ago. It's been a good conversation. There have been points well made, which I hope I can take up in in other ordinances coming to follow this one. But I, I just, I can't, I, the, the, the irony of people making comments like that in this conversation doesn't seem to amaze me. I would urge everyone to think about not just your rights as a consumer, but your rights, your responsibilities as a citizen, your definition of the word community. If you talk about your neighborhood as being an isolated community, and yet you work in the city of Bloomington, perhaps you should rethink how you talk about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember Rosenbarker.
Thank you. I just want to say a quick comment. I don't want, I'm trying not to say anything anyone else has said. So one thing I think that hasn't been mentioned that has helped me in this process. I mean, first, I haven't, I haven't talked a lot. So I mean, I think this has been incredibly difficult and just I've had to learn a lot over the last few months, for sure, on annexation. There's a lot of history here, a lot of legal jargon, right, and rules to get, to wrap my head around. So it's been a busy time, I would say. I mean, I think that our state's process for annexation is not the best, but I think we, in Bloomington and Monroe County, have to deal with this stuff a lot, that we just don't always agree with what the state wants us to do, and we try to do the very best we can with what we have been given. And so this is another one of those situations for me. I think that this is how annexation happens. And so here we are in the middle of the process. I guess actually nearing the end, because it's just been years and years of annexation process. So, okay, the thing that I think hasn't been mentioned yet and that has helped me in my decision making is that I think as our city grows and more people come to live here, I think what should guide not just the city, but the areas that are proposed for this annexation is the UDO. And so right now, while those areas are in the county, we're really, you know, we don't, we're not having any input on what can be built where, but I think the UDO took a lot longer, maybe that's not true, to update than this current annexation process is like hours and hours of public input and staff time and consultants, and I think it's a really good guiding document. And so I think it's important for the city of Bloomington to annex these areas so that we can say, yes, this is urban. This is a good place for multifamily housing. It's on a bus line. It's next to a grocery store. So I really value the work of the UDO, I would say. And for me, that's one of my big reasons as to why I will be voting yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarker. Do we have any other council members with final comments before we proceed? Okay, seeing none. And being the last commenter, if I can proceed again, without being accused of trying to avoid rebuttal somewhere along the line here. But what I would like to say is, first of all, I do agree with Councilmember Flaherty on his comments on where some of the council members' integrity has been impugned and attacked. I think that is beyond the pale. It is okay for us to disagree. It's okay for us to agree to disagree. But to get down in the weeds like that, I think is just flat out improper and unnecessary in democratic debate and dialogue. I've had talks, and many of us on this council have, with many of our county colleagues. Some more than others, but I will guarantee that. There have been talks about more than annexation, about how to use ARCA funds, hopefully collectively, to get a bigger bang of the buck to collaborate, to do some of those things. And some of those talks have been positive. But it, it discourages me sometimes to see that there seems to be a rift by some of our county colleagues and some of our own city administrators and office of the mayor. I, I don't know what that is. I'm not privy to that, but that, that's troublesome to me. That we as elected officials in this county can't sit down, even if we disagree, to work some things out before it's necessary to do it in a public forum. That, that's just a little bit discouraging to me. I think one of my council members has explained and alluded to the previous annexation process in 2017 before it was illegally and unconstitutionally stopped by the state. I say that to say this, this council did not bring this annexation process back. I mean, it's an obligation that, and many of us agreed with it, but we didn't bring it back. But I will say that we have, this council has a responsibility to review periodically our city boundaries. That's part of our job. I think you, it is incorrect to say that once we started, we've already got our minds made up. We're going to do this, or we're not going to do that. I disagree with that. But what I do, will say, we have a responsibility to periodically review our city boundaries, and that is what we are doing. I've been a little bit troubled by, tonight, by some of the public comments that I've heard. And this council is in a very uninviewable position. Trust me, and I think we all feel that. And I think many of you out in the public understand that. Annexation may have and could have been maybe able to proceed differently. I've heard that comment a couple of times tonight, and that is very, very possible. This particular ordinance, seventeen dash oh nine as amended, or Area 1A, I plan to support tonight. But I am depending on this city administration, this mayor, his office, all of our people, all the resources that we have to do what has been proposed and what has been promised as we move forward. I am depending on that. And I think many of us are. So having said that, do we have any other final comments from my colleagues or any rebuttal to what I just said? Thank you very much. Are we ready for the question? Seeing no more comments from the council or the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance seventeen dash oh nine as amended.
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarker.
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Brolin?
No.
And Bowlin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Order seventeen dash oh nine as amended is adopted or passes six, three, zero. I'm sorry, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I moved that the, I moved that the council recess until 6:30 next Wednesday, September 22nd, and also canceled the committee meeting scheduled for that evening.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second, and thank you for bringing that up. That will be a special session, and I think that's included in your, or understood in your motion. And, but before we vote on that motion, if it's proper, there is matters of council schedule that I'd like to be discussed before we do, if, if there's no objections to that. Okay, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. Well, assuming this, this motion is, is adopted, and you may want to to hear from the administration on this motion to make sure that they'll have availability next Wednesday. The motion takes care of one item of business, which is canceling the committee meeting for next week, given that there's no business on ready for action by a committee. It's going to suggest that the council cancel that committee meeting. And the other item, I, I was just going to provide a reminder that next Friday, September 24th, will include a work session. But if we're going to meet next Wednesday, we can, we can discuss it then. So that was all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Bowlin.
Mr. President, I think before we entertain a motion to recess, I think that everyone would agree that the, the administration believes that Area 7 should not even be taken up. That if we simply move to introduce and vote down the motion to introduce, we could dispose of that item tonight in about one minute. And I wonder if there would be a will for among you or my colleagues, or our colleagues, to entertain that idea.
I will allow my colleagues to speak for themselves. It's now about 11:20, and we do have a motion on the floor. But thank you for noticing that. Whoever made the motion, would you care to address that or proceed with the motion?
I would like to proceed with the motion.
Fantastic. Been properly moved in second, I believe. And correct me if I'm wrong, but your motion is that the committee meeting for next week has been canceled but rescheduled as a special session to Councilmember.
It would be, my motion is to recess this special session until next Wednesday and take it up again at 6:30 next Wednesday. And cancel the committee meeting for that night.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and, and thank you for your patience when we stumbled around. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, just before we took a vote, I was going to see if, if the clerk and or someone from the administration, I would both be able to confirm their availability for the continuation of this special session on, on Wednesday next week at 6:30.
Well, thank you. We were going to ask the administration for that. I do believe that tentative possible planning for next week, we've already worked that out with the clerk, but she can confirm that as well. Would you care to address that, Clerk Bowlin? With regard to next Wednesday, I believe we've already discussed that and you're prepared for that.
Oh, sorry, I was actually typing and not quite following in the same way. And yes, I will, will be available next week. So thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie.
Yes, Corporation Council, Floripa Guthrie. The administration is fine with doing it next Wednesday as well.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember Flaherty?
No, not for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's motion on the floor, and it's been properly second. Will the clerk please? Is it proper to call a roll? Yes, will the clerk please call a roll? Thank you.
Let's see, we'll start with Councilmember Scambolary.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes. Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarker.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. That motion passes nine zero to recess. And until next Wednesday, six thirty, and we will see you then if there's no objections. Thank you all very, very much.